That's a hard job. Yeah, it is.
My good friend Mike Dubovich was the first one to do that program.
Okay.
We sent Mike actually to Hawaii to study for like two months to get trained for that program.
The IE program?
When they first started the IE program. Now Mike lives in Colorado. A good guy, really a good guy.
You're trying to remember that, Betty, that, 'cause you're on the air now.
What was that?
That he's a good guy.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Oh, he is a good guy.
That was an elementary education.
He didn't give me any money.
I'm glad I worked for the railroad.
Oh, yeah.
Close enough to you?
Probably.
Mr. Secretary, we're ready?
Yes, we are.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a duly appetized meeting of the Joliet Zoning Board of Appeals. In our capacity, we hear petitions for relief from the strict provisions of our city ordinance. In matters of this type, the decision of the board is final in respect that it does not go to the mayor or the city council for further action. However, if you disagree with our decision, you have recourse in a court of record. We also hear petitions for variations of land use. In matters of this type, we act as an advisory committee to the mayor and the city council, making a recommendation either for or against it. The final decision on land use is made by the mayor and city council. Please call the roll.
Ms. Darley?
Here.
Mr. Ferguson?
Here.
Mr. Graham?
Here.
Ms. Nevadaes? Ms. Powers? Mr. Riggs?
Here.
Mr. Hennessy.
Any changes with the agenda, Mr. Secretary?
No, Mr. Chair, there are not. Actually, if you saw in your addendum, there was a late change to table, a request for tabling on item number five.
All right, we can take action on that now. Petition 2016-54 is asking for a table. Do I have a motion?
Motion to table.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Darley?
Aye.
Mr. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Okay, petition 2016-53, Mr. Ken Strzezewski.
Well said.
Go with both of its names, Ken.
Mr. Chair and members of the board, the petitioner in this case is RMS Properties Seven LLC, and the petitioner is requesting a variation to allow the addition of a second wall sign on the west side of Dollar Tree, which is located at 2134 West Jefferson Street. In September of 2010, the Joliet City Council approved a special use permit to allow an indoor storage facility at the subject site. That was petition 2010-45, ordinance number 16691, and in January 2012, the council approved a special use permit to allow three mini-storage buildings. Petition number 2011-76, ordinance number 16917. The subject site includes a 25,326-square-foot masonry, multi-unit commercial center known as Marycrest Shopping Center. The 12-acre site is on the south side of Jefferson Street, west of Hamas. The property is Zone B3, general business district. This petition was filed on November 5, 2016. The land use and zoning adjacent to the site is commercial, Zone B3 to the north, general business, east and west, and single and multifamily residential, which is used as assisted living, Zone B1, neighborhood business, and R2, single-family residential, to the south. Comments from other city departments, government agencies, or public utilities? The Community Design Review Board discussed this request at its monthly meeting held December 1, 2016. There were no subsequent comments from city departments, government agencies, or utilities. Minutes of the meeting are in file with the planning department. The petitioner proposes to add a 70-square-foot set of illuminated channel letters on the west wall of Dollar Tree. In your packet is a sign elevation. The sign will be visible to internal traffic, which is circulating in the Marycrest Shopping Center. The sign will have similar appearance, a similar appearance to the existing front wall sign. And staff believes that the approval of the requested variation will, to allow an additional wall sign, will not significantly alter the essential character of the area or the city as a whole. And that concludes our staff report.
Thank you. I must swear you in. You swear your statements to be true?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Ken Strzezewski, All-American signed, 5501 West 109th in Oakland.
Is there anything else you'd like to add to?
Uh, no, that was, that was a good summary, other than the fact that there was a previous sign in that same exact location for the previous tenant.
That will be removed?
It is removed.
It is removed, okay. You actually get background music for your petitions.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Sure. All right, is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone opposed? All right, you call the roll, Mr. Secretary. No, I need a motion first.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Darley?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye. Thank you.
Petition 2016-55?
Good afternoon. Politize the uniform I'm working today.
Uniforms are fine here.
Mr. Chair and members of the board, this is petition 2016-55. Applicant is Anthony Nowak, also the owner of the property. This is for 906 Oneida Street. It's a request for a series of setback variations to allow a second-story addition to an existing single-family home. The variation is needed due to the existing undersized side yard dimensions. The property is located at 906 Oneida, as I mentioned. It's on the south side of Oneida, west of Prairie Avenue. The property is located in the historic Cathedral area. As far as the site information, the site is approximately 37 feet by 124.3 feet, or just under 4,600 square feet. The property is Zone R-2, single-family residential district. The petition was filed November 10 of 2016. Land use and zoning in all directions is single-family residential, Zone R-2, single-family residential district. The Community Design Review Board reviewed the request at its monthly meeting held December 1, 2016. There were no subsequent comments from other city departments or utilities. Members of, minutes of the meeting are on file with the planning division. The variation will allow construction of a second-story addition onto a one, existing one and a one-half-story, 1,370-square-foot frame residence built in 1898. The existing side yards are three feet on the east side and five and a half feet on the west side. The variation will reduce the required sum of side yards on the undersized lot from 13 feet to eight and a half total feet. The variation will further allow a minimum side yard of less than five feet on the east side, and will allow the continuation of a reduced front yard setback with a, at a 22 and a half foot setback. 30 foot is actually required by ordinance. The site plan is attached in your packet. Approval of this request will allow a significant expansion of a residence to meet the needs of the owners and to increase the value of the property. The variation will have minimal impact on the essential character of the area, and that concludes the staff report.
Thank you. You swear your statement to be true?
Yes.
Name and address for the record, please.
Anthony Nowak, 906 Oneida Street, Joliet, Illinois 60435.
Okay, any comments or questions regarding the petition you'd like to add?
No, we just really, we were, when we started the project, it's really involved, I was looking either moving or be able to build on this house, and I found that some of the stuff we're looking to do in this house, if I was to buy certain homes that already had those features, those all homes were like $350,000-plus. So we decided to put it into this, and we were really, we went a long way with it, and I was fortunate with the city that I wasn't aware of the variation, so we were hoping to get, we would've had a lot of it done already, but they were really cool. They would let me, they let us get a demo permit so we'd be able to demo the inside of the house. So we just really want to try to get it going as quick as we can, and the neighbors are just enthralled with it. It's gonna really be, it's gonna be awesome. It's gonna look really good, and it keeps me in that neighborhood, and I like the neighborhood a lot.
Any questions from the board? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone opposed? I'd like to close the petition and ask for a motion from our board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Please call the roll.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Darley?
Aye.
Mr. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Motion approved. I wish you the best.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Graham?
Sure.
Typically, once you guys approve it, how long would it would be that I could go over and then get the permit so I can, that we can start to do the work?
I'd say this afternoon.
You could apply today.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
How's that?
Thanks, guys. Have a great day.
You're welcome. Okay, old business. We have petition 2016-45, Mr. Nathaniel Matthews.
Mr. Chair and members of the board, this is petition number 2016-45. Applicant and owner is Nathaniel Matthews. For, the location is for 408 East Washington Street. This is a request for a special use permit in to, in order to allow the addition of a third residential unit. The property in question is Zone B1, neighborhood business. According to available tax assessor records, the subject structure was built in 1885. The site history for the property, as found in the available Joliet Pulk directories, shows that the property was a single-family structure until around 1950, when it was converted into three tenant spaces. It was noted to fall within the one and two-family category and having a B1, neighborhood business zoning in the 1978 southeast neighborhood plan. The case was filed on August 12, 2016. Surrounding zoning, land use and character is, to the north, commercial B1; to the south, residential R2; to the east is a vacant lot, Zoned R3; and to the west is a residential property, Zone B-1. The Community Design Review Board met at its monthly meeting on October 6, 2016. There were no comments concerning this request. The Community Design Review Board meeting of November 3, 2016, was actually canceled. An inspection of the structure was conducted by the city's planning division on October 18, 2016. The first floor contains a one-bedroom unit and a two-bedroom unit. The upper floor is a small studio apartment that has a separate room for a kitchen. The kitchen's stove and sink were removed at the request of the Neighborhood Services Division. The bathroom for this unit is within the foyer area and is separated from the unit by the main door. You can refer to the attached plans that are drawn by staff that are in your packet. According to Neighborhood Services, this bathroom does not meet code. Off-street parking is available for three cars within the concrete driveway. The violation list from the most recent Neighborhood Services inspection is attached in your, to the staff report. The approval of the requested special use permit will allow a three-unit structure within a B1, neighborhood business zoning district. If the zoning board desires to approve this special use permit, the following conditions would be included. One, that the list of violations on the Neighborhood Services inspection report be corrected. Two, that the property not be expanded in the future. Three, that the existing off-street parking remain in the future. Four, that the owner participate in the city's landlord training and tenant screening programs. Five, that the special use granted shall herein terminate and lapse unless a building permit or certificate of occupancy is obtained not later than 180 days on the effective date of this ordinance, and that the erection or alteration of a building is started or the use is commenced within such period. The board may grant an extension of this period valid for no more than 180 additional days upon written application and good cause shown without any notice or public hearing. Whether or not there is an intention to abandon the special use, if any special use is discontinued for a continuous period of one year, or if an intent to abandon the special use is evident in a shorter period of time, the special use for such use shall become void, and such use shall not thereafter be reestablished unless a new special use is obtained. And finally, condition number six, should the property be declared a public nuisance, it shall be subject to a rehearing and a possible revocation of the special use permit. That concludes the staff report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I must swear you in, sir.
Indeed, sir. I, we don't, and I'll teach you, we don't, I will affirm.
Okay, affirming is fine.
We do affirm.
You affirm that your statements to be true?
Yes.
That's all I need to know. Okay, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Dr. Nathaniel Matthews. I live at 201 Bradford Road in Joliet, Illinois. Early on, I lived in this particular property at 408 East Washington Street.
Is there anything you'd like to add to what the secretary read?
Yes. I'd like to go back originally, this apartment, this building was an apartment. Actually, first of all, good evening, gentlemen. It was originally an apartment, and when we, when we originally addressed the issue with the real estate, it was a three-story apartment building at that time. And I believe somewhere in this history, originally, this building was just a single building, but it later on was another added part to it, according to some of my understanding, somewhere in the history of this building. This part, this building happened in the past, served, served as three apartment early on, and it's not a, and when we, like, we, when we moved into here, this building in 1978, we just used it as a, without really changing any structure, we used it as a single-family home. That's the way when we moved into it. And my children grew up and got older, got grown, were not, we rented out the apartment to them. That's the way it really existed. In fact, we rented out to our family as three apartment. We had a relative apartment, apartment upstairs, and apartment to east side of the building, as you may see it there. It was, and that's the way it was. The only time the problem came about was when we applied for Section 8. I think that was 05, somewhere around 05 or earlier. And when, at that time, it was, it was never an issue regarding the, whether it was a three-story building or a two-story, I mean, I'm sorry, whether it's a two-story or a three-apartment building, that never was an issue. Now, I am, when the city took issue with it at first, as I said earlier, I should've requested a variance at that time, but I didn't. I tried to come, as much as possible, to comply with the city ordinance or the city application for rental. That's where it started at. And they requested I remove all of the upstairs kitchen appliances or the kitchen, anything that related to the kitchen. So that's, that's happened, I believe, in like 2005, somewhere thereabout. But other than that, up until that time, it was a really, an apartment, a studio apartment up in that area. I just changed it myself to convert it to a, just a, eliminated the kitchen, that's what I did. I, and so for the bathroom, the bathroom was in the hall, that's the way it was when we bought it. It's the same identical place that it, when we bought it, purchased the building, the upstairs bathroom I'm talking about, as it says in the foyer. Same identical place. It's no, it has not been relocated. It's the same place. They had a sink in the hall, and it's the same location as it was then. The, so I'm, I'm, I'm not really requesting a change or anything, I'm just asking for a variance to allow the building to be maintained as originally was, and also to allow for us to rent it as apartment upstairs, as a studio apartment to one man or a one person or a married person, not as, not a married couple, without children. And the downstairs, now they said the downstairs was a one-bedroom, but it's actually two. In fact, it was, I believe, three when, when we purchased it, but we took the living room in the section right here in the front, that particular section where they said a living room on the east side of the building, that originally was a, there was a bedroom in the, and it was the living room, now it was two rooms. We, it was separated by a panel. Back in the day, they did a lot of that. They put up panels, and, and that was original. I don't know when it was done, but it was simply divided by a panel. We removed the panel and left it a living room. We took the, we removed the bedroom, that's what happened. And, man, there was no, no need to restore anything there, we left it as living. But at the back, there was, it's called a porch, it really is a bedroom. It really is a bedroom, we used it as a bedroom throughout, throughout our stay there, and it's still a bedroom. The only difference is it has a door, a bolt lock, that, and it doesn't care you going out or in, they can lock it like they want to. I, so I would like for this hearing officer to allow the building to, to be retained as a three-apartment building. In this neighborhood, we're not, it's not congested, and for the foreseeable future, don't look like it will be congested. Right down the street from the house is a community center that, that, you know, I mean, for the individual, and there's no, and it's only one, only two houses in this block. It's only, it's, it's two, 46 and 408. Next to that is a, is a vacant lot, next to our, that apartment there, is a, is a vacant lot, and back of it is a vacant lot. It's a, to the, down to the east, west of it is a vacant lot. So across the street from the house is a vacant lot. So it's not, it's, there are other parts, building that is zoned for businesses. So I, by being a business zone, I, I, I'm asking that it be retained as a business zone and, and be allowed for a three-apartment. It's not, as long as it's not overcrowded. We, there's no intention, no reason to rent it in an amount that would make it a congested. It would not affect the community where this building is located, in a negative amount. So I'm asking the panel if they could accept it or allow this building to be either grandfathered in as a, because of the length of the time it's been there, grandfathered in as a three-unit, as long as it's retained, not, not overcrowded. I would like to see it be maintained as a three-unit building.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews. Any questions from the board?
How many of the units are, is it all Section 8?
No, it's not Section 8. It's not.
You never, you applied for that but never got it?
No, no.
Okay.
So we just rented it as well.
Ms. Darley?
Is anyone living there now?
Big five.
Is anybody living there now?
Yes, it is. There's someone living in the upstairs unit and to the, unit to the west.
Which would be the one or the two-bedroom unit?
Uh, the two-bedroom.
Okay. We have this list of violations that were, they inspected in October. Did you have the re-inspection done on 10/26 as it was supposed to be?
I do have a list of the violations. In fact, I was doing, in the process of, once something, when this issue was raised again, I was in the process, in fact, the inspector could verify the, we're in the process of cleaning it up. In fact, we did. If you look at the picture, if you, if there, I don't know whether they have one of the older views, one that was rubbish in the back, but we actually renewed this whole fence. That fence is a new fence. It goes, it circles the building all the way back to the back. So we are in the process of rehabbing the, you know, I mean, doing all the repairs. And as you may look at it, in 19, I think it was 2011, the building had, it was a lot of remodeling in the building within the city, in connection with the city program. So it, and that was in 2011, I believe, if I'm correct. I think it might be a part of your record. So it's, it's, the building is, we actually in the process of really doing all the repairs. In fact, I was doing it as I was saying, prior to the conflict that we had with the city about the three-unit building.
Mr. Matthews, despite all the things that you say were done in 2011?
Yeah.
There's still this lengthy list of violations?
Yes, but I, but what happened was that the original list was only 15 violations. That's what I said, it was only 15. If you got, you probably have two lists there, and, but later, the, the recent list, that was added somewhere around, it was increased up until about 40-some violations, which originally was only 15. And the, but all of, none of those violations, which we call life-threatening or violations that would be dangerous to anybody's health, basically superficial or some facial violation, but it's not any violation that would endanger a person's life. We're working on doing those, correcting all of the violations.
I have a question of Mike. Mike, in the first condition, it talks about violations being corrected. Of course, is there a time limit on that prior to getting an occupancy permit? Or where are we with that?
I'm gonna check with the staff here. If you bear with me one moment.
Sir, could you enter that for the record, please? You sound like you know what you're talking about. I must swear you in.
Sure. My name is Gabe Friend.
You swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
I'm an inspector for the city. My name is Gabe Friend. I am the inspector that was on the case. And I missed the first part of the presentation. In 2008, our records show that the building was converted, per city request, to two units, because it had been illegally converted to three. In 2015, it went vacant, so the file was passed off. We asked them not to occupy it without our permission and a certificate of inspection from our department. And then, I believe in April of this year, I found it occupied. So that's when everything started. And the 15 violations, then they went to 40, was a result of, I did an exterior inspection because I was not allowed entry, then I did an inspection of one unit because I was allowed in there, and then the list did increase when I was allowed in the entire building. So that is why the violations increased. We have come to some agreement to allow one unit to be occupied in the meantime while we determine what's gonna happen with the other units. You know, it's, it's really up to this board and the city council of whether or not they allow the three units. Our, our problem is, in the meantime, while it's non-conforming, we would like it to be vacant. We did allow the one unit. It sounds like today, possibly two of the three units are occupied. The upstairs unit has no kitchen facility inside of it. The bathroom for that unit is in a common hallway, so it has no bathroom or kitchen inside of the unit itself. And that was changed this year when they did remodeling. Stop work orders were put on the door, not approved for occupancy. They were removed several times, and the work was completed without permits, even though there's been letters and notices sent attempting him to stop work and get permits. It just was finished without permits. All of that work needs inspected. There's significant code violations that still need addressed, even though, you know, work has been done. It wasn't done with proper permits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Would you like to respond to that, Dr. Matthews?
Yes, Ed. What really happened was, the really, the previous tenant had did some damage into the, which was a lot of superficial damage in the building, prior to the, we started to repair. What I did, I said I was just gonna wait, and I was going, wasn't going to get in a hurry to make any repairs, this is something I was gonna do on my own, and so that's what happened. What happened was, one, a member of our church needed an apartment, and so this is a single man, and he needed an apartment, so we, the apartment was there. So it really didn't need very much of anything for a repair, it's just that it was the first floor of the building that had been a lot of damage, there were holes in the wall, and a lot of filters and so forth. I said I was gonna take up my time and do it, make these repaired. But meanwhile, the young lady came about, she needed a place for her and her children, and she, I happened to know where she stayed, and the kind of condition she was in, and so I, she had three children, so I, you know, it's good sense to allow her to stay there because she needed a place to stay, because where she was at really was unsafe, it was really congested, it just was unsafe for her, herself, and her, she had two daughters and a son, and it, so I thought it best to just let her have it, and we, and we took about, in fact, she paid the money upfront, and we just, and it took about two weeks for us to finish it, but we was already making, we was doing some repair on the building. That's the point. It was not like it was a total disregard for the city and what we were doing. I feel that sometime you have to, there's a human connection, there are too many people in the streets, there's too many people that have nowhere to go, and she really needed a place to stay, so I, it was only reasonable that I should've permitted her to stay there. The young man upstairs, he was there when nobody was there, when the building moved out, when the people on the first floor moved out. Now, the city, we, there was no issue with the city originally, my understanding, but it was only when the, when the inspector requested that I not rent it to anybody until they inspected it. Well, there was never an issue up until that point, that's what I'm saying. The building had been rented out. The people had vacated the building on their own initiative. So it was not an issue. So I don't see why it should've been that I had to have an inspector before it was rerented out again, not like it was, there was never, there was no, there was no order of vacation, vacating the building based upon any prior condition. So I, that was not fair for the city to come and tell me, don't rent the apartment out until they come in and respect it all again, and then they won't. What we, what I was doing, now, we did get some help to, my young man back there, my son-in-law, he helped, volunteered to help me do some repairs, stuff like that, but that was reasonable, and not like we was trying to get over on the city. But I was concerned about the city being excessive in their handling of the property. I was concerned about that. But when we did finish it, I opened the door, I asked them to come and inspect it. That was my concern originally, was them finding a lot of violations, they ain't gonna tell me they can't rent the building at all, prior to there being some, you know, inspection. Well, I thought it better that the building be occupied, and then if they find some defect in it, then they could say then it was unsafe of that nature.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. I'm gonna move forward here. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Sir?
Yes, sir.
Please step up. I must swear you in first, or affirm? You affirm your statements to be true? Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
111 Southeastern.
Your name, please.
I'm James Thompson.
James, okay.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, on the violations, I supervised the guys that was helping out during the work because Mr. Nathaniel needed to help a young lady out, which he did. Also, we was trying to complete those violations that they had. As you seen, the fence, he did a lot of repairs on the violations he was trying to work on them, and out of, out of just trying to supervise and help the guys, knock those violations off before we can, before he can get some extra income in to finish the rest of the violations. So that's about all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna close this petition and ask the board for a motion and a vote, please.
Motion to deny.
Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Darley?
Aye.
Mr. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
We have approval in the minutes. We have a motion for that?
Motion to approve.
Everyone, approve in the minutes. And I move for adjournment.
Aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned.